All right, very good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the Planning Commission meeting here at City Hall Laurel Street. This is Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, 6:00 PM. Would you please call the roll?
Marone.
Corum.
Here.
Stangline.
Here.
Duval.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Grunenwald.
Yes.
Norwood.
Yes.
All right. Item number three is our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So, exciting number four here. First thing off our list, we've finagled two brave souls to serve on our esteemed commission for the next, whatever the term is. It's a long time, a really long time. Yeah, and there's no way off. I don't know if he told you this, but there is no way out of this commission. So, James is going to lead us in the oath, so take it away, James.
Just standing up, that's just fine, and we'll have you raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Norwood.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of the Planning Commission of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota.
Of the Office of the Planning Commission of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will have you sign these guys after?
In all seriousness, I would like to say to both of our new members here, thank you so much for stepping forward. This, as you know, is an uncompensated position. It is highly criticized work. It's a lot of work, but I certainly commend anyone who takes time out of their own lives to dedicate to public service in our city of Brainerd. So, thank you, both of you, for stepping up, and I look forward to working with both of you.
Sure.
Very good. So, we're going to move on to number five, which is an approval of the agenda. Do we have any approval of the agenda? Do we have any additions, subtractions? Yes, please.
Addition to the agenda, I would like to add an item 7C, for lack of a better way to describe it, community art feature space.
Okay.
And with that, I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Very good. We have an agenda here. One more time on what your community art, what was the?
Basically, community art feature space.
Thank you.
This will all be relevant when I show you my vacation pictures.
Oh, geez.
All of them?
Everyone could be in store for quite the visual episode here tonight. When he returns with his vacation pictures, watch out. All right, here we go. We're going to jump right in to item number six. This is the approval of the minutes. This is from the meeting that was held on May 17th, 2023. They were included in the packet. Does anyone have a motion to approve or amend the amended minutes?
Motion to approve, Norwood.
Yeah, a motion to approve is our second.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Very good. We got approval of the minutes. Item seven, this is our new business. We're going to start off with item seven A. This is the consideration of a conditional use permit for a daycare facility located at 703 Oak Street. Mr. Kramvik, would you please just kind of get us rolling on this? And following Mr. Kramvik here, we will have questions for staff, public hearing, questions for applicant, and so forth. So, James, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're actually going to have Dylan do this one.
I'm very sorry, Dylan.
It's all good. Good evening. The Brainerd Family YMCA applied for a conditional use permit to operate a commercial daycare facility at 703 Oak Street. The immediate plan is to provide services for 66 total children, a staff of 12 teachers, two part-time employees, and administrative leader. In our findings of fact, this is in a town center zoning district, and commercial daycare facilities are in allowed use. When looking at the specific commercial daycare facility conditions for conditional use, the law requirements and setbacks that must be met for the base zoning district in this case, that is a zero to 10-foot range with no minimum lot size. Therefore, the lot meets that. A childcare facility or a commercial daycare facility requires sewer and water, which this parcel is connected to. The screening requirement, a daycare facility shall provide screening along any shared property boundaries regardless of adjacent use. Staff's interpretation of this is because that there are no outdoor uses, and any proposed use of playground would be occurring at the premises of 602 Oak Street, an adjacent property also owned by Brainerd Family YMCA. That would not require screening for the facility. There shall be off-street parking located separately from any outdoor play area, which seeing an outdoor play area is not on the premises, that would fit. There is also an allocation of about 26 total parking spaces for use at the parcel. There's a loop for off-street loading that would accommodate 10 to 12 vehicles. At the time of the submission of this, no signing signage is currently proposed or submitted, and any further signing would require a permit. And any compliance with state regulations specifically related to daycare facilities would have to be met through the Department of Health in order to obtain a certificate of occupancy. The additional criteria is for granting a conditional use permit. Again, assuring the proposed use conforms to zoning district and is a permitted conditional use, which this is a permitted conditional use in the town center zoning district. The proposed use meets regulations and standards established by this ordinance. The TC zoning district must meet coverage area principal building standards as defined in the code. The applicant does not propose an expansion to the building or parking lot. The build-to-range setbacks of zero to 10 feet. The existing building has a 15-foot setback from the property line at the front of the parcel, and this is an existing nonconformity, which is grandfathered in. The side yard setback is built to a range of zero to 10. There's a side yard setback of 0 feet on the eastern side and 17 feet 8 inches on the western side. Again, this is an existing nonconformity. The rear yard setback has a minimum of zero. The building has a 36-foot setback from the rear property line. This is filled with parking lot space. The proposed use shall not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other persons or property. Proposed daycare facility at 703 Oak will be conducted entirely inside the building, except for transporting children across the street to the playground also owned by the YMCA. This process does not pose any danger, injury, or noxiousness to any surrounding persons or property. The proposed use shall be situated oriented landscaped to produce harmonious relationship of buildings and grounds to adjacent buildings and properties. The architectural plans as presented in the packet demonstrate no change. The orientation of the building or landscape that would constitute the existing building failing to conform to the code as written. The proposed use shall produce a total visual impression and environment which is consistent with the neighborhood. There's no substantial plans to the building exterior as proposed in the plan. Proposed use shall organize vehicle access and parking to minimize traffic congestion. There will be an attached approximate 26-car parking lot and loading zone to accommodate traffic at the site that is entered from the street at the west side of the property, not off of Oak Street. That would be, is that South Eighth?
Sixth.
Sixth, yeah. The proposed use shall preserve the objectives of the ordinance and shall be consistent with the comprehensive plans. We, as staff, noted at least three goals where this pulls into the comprehensive plan. Land use goal three, support and invest in incremental enhancements of quality of life. Policy two, encourage and attract stores and services for the daily needs of our community. There is a childcare shortage in the community, and this directly addresses that. Two, economic development goal. One is to support infill and redevelopment throughout Brainerd as a strategic component of growth. The policy in particular, driving infill development and redevelopment towards area where current infrastructure is present or places where high level of blight or disinvestment exist. While there is not blight or disinvestment in this neighborhood, there is current infrastructure present here with this facility. Economic development goal two, supporting the workforce and helping them thrive. Policy one, collaborate with local partners, stakeholders to address industry workforce needs, creating a career and education pathway for residents of all ages. A shortage of childcare in the region is a concern for business and workforce in the community of this project. By YMCA, addresses a major need in the workforce for the community. For section 515-2B.7, on conditions that can be applied in a conditional use permit, those listed conditions A through I include increasing the required lot size or yard setback dimensions, limiting the height, size, or location of the buildings. See regulating ingress and egress to the property and the proposed structures thereon, with particular references to vehicle and pedestrian safety, convenience, traffic flow and control, and access in the case of fire or another catastrophe, regulating the street width, increasing the number of required off-street parking spaces, limiting the number, size, and location of lighting or signs, requiring berm fencing, screening, landscaping, or other facilities to protect adjacent or nearby property, requiring dedication of some open space or green space, regulating the appearance of the facility or site so that they are harmonious with the neighborhood of city. All of these are conditions that could be added to the conditional use by the Planning Commission. As of this writing, no parties have contacted our department, Community Development Department, for more information on the conditional use permit as proposed for a commercial daycare facility at 703 Oak. Our staff recommendation is the approval of this conditional use permit for 703 Oak without any of the extra added conditions that can be applied through 515-2B.7.
There's one additional item that I'll add to this as well. One of the representatives of the applicant did discuss about outdoor lighting. They're not going to, at this time, they're not proposing any additional outdoor lighting, as per my last conversation. I believe there's some existing wall packs that are on the side of the building shining down, as well as there's a light that kind of shines the parking lot. So, the applicant certainly could talk further about that if you do have questions about lighting, but that was the conversation I had last week with the representative from the applicant.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Kramvik. Do we have any questions for our staff? Anyone? No. No questions for staff? Okay, very good. At this time, then, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing and give the opportunity for anyone who would like to speak on this to come forward. Generally, we have the applicant, if they would like, or representative of the applicant, to come forward first, kind of talk us through what they would like for us to hear. Don't have to, but you certainly have the opportunity to. Now's your time. And anyone who does come up, please state your name and address and so forth. And then, following the applicant, if anyone would like to speak either in favor or against the conditional use permit in front of us, same process. Name and address, and this is your chance for us to hear what you have to say. So, at this time, I'm going to have the public hearing open and invite anyone up who'd like to come up. And it looks like we have no volunteers. So, does anyone else here besides the applicant that would like to speak regarding this conditional use permit? Okay, very good. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for the applicant or representative of the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Maybe some follow-up on the lighting point, the conversation there. Any replacement or relocation of lighting would conform with the ordinance, would need to conform with the ordinance if it's not currently. Can you guide me on that, please, James, and maybe if?
Yeah, if they were to change out any of the existing fixtures, it would have to conform to the ordinance. At this time, I don't believe that the applicant's proposing a change out.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Very good. So, unless we have any other further questions, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to us. Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I have another.
Oh, very good.
And I do have a question for the applicant, please, if we might have.
Or applicant representative, which?
Or applicant representative, if you might come forward. The question regards, you know, how you plan to get kids across Oak Street if they're going to access the playground? Is, are they being bused, or are they walking across the sidewalk or the crosswalks? If you could, help us think that through.
Thanks, Shane. Good evening, everybody. My name is Shane Riffle. I'm the CEO at the Brainerd Family Y. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're honored to be here. It's been a long road, but hopefully we're getting near the end of it. To answer your question about safety and crossing the road, we do field trips as it is right now, and what we do is we have these large orange flags, and when we're crossing streets, our staff monitor traffic, and then they hold up the flags. Ideally, in the future, I was just actually thinking earlier, it would be nice to have the flashing lights that we could hit when we're crossing, because we are looking at some further daycare options in an existing facility.
Very good. Thank you, Shane. Appreciate that. That would be, that would be a Public Works kind of a request and not something that the applicant would be responsible for, but it seems, if you've got a parade of children, that you're running across Oak Street, that, you know, a block, a block off of South Sixth, and it seems prudent that we'd want to try and work something in there to, and I think the flashing lights to get your attention as you make your right turn or your left turn onto Oak, that your attention is drawn, that you've got the flasher there that's queuing up to let you be prepared. I don't think there's an action here on that, but it just seems like something that Public Works could think of. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Duval. Okay, so, with that, we have the public hearing closed. We're going to go ahead and bring this back to this commission for consideration of the testimony we've heard and the application in front of us. So, at this time, anybody has any thoughts or anything that they'd like to bring before the group?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I would just like to say, this is a no-brainer. I think this is a great project. I think this represents terrific reuse of a building that I believe is currently vacant. I think this is terrific, and I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Corum. Anyone else?
Long time needed.
Agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll chime in. This seems like a no-brainer to me, too. This is, this fits a lot of the parts and pieces of our comp plan. It seems like it's a good fit for repurpose. And I certainly think that we should do everything that we can to help our YMCA friends right across the street do what they do. Great, great organization and support, support what they got going on. So, unless we have any further conversation, we'll be looking for a motion on this. Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the conditional use permit for 703 Oak Street, Brainerd?
With none of the conditions attached, with no?
Yes, no additional conditions.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve with no conditions attached?
Second.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? Yes, please, Mr. Corum.
Well, you're saying no conditions, but we have conditions in there. Do we have any conditions in there, or are there none?
None.
I just want to make sure. Okay, great.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Mr. Kramvik, would you please let Shane know what we got cooking here and what to expect?
Yes, so this will be heard at the next city council meeting on July 3rd at 7:30 PM.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are going to move on to item 7B. This is a consideration for the county manor, which, country manor, rezoning plat in PUD. So, at this time, James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you.
So, the applicant has three applications for this project in front of the Planning Commission tonight. First is for an ordinance text amendment to establish a PUD overlay district, a preliminary plat and final plat to allow Country Manor to establish two lots and three outlots, and a planned unit development, general concept plan, and development stage plan for the construction of a senior living facility. The purpose of the request is to construct a senior living facility comprised of, on the application, is 92 apartments and 18 memory care units. The applicant will explain here tonight, that's going to change a little bit based on some of the interior layout that they're looking at potentially changing. I think maybe removing four to six units total. So, in addition to the senior living facility, there'd also be a childcare facility for eight infants, 14 toddlers, 40 preschoolers, and 30 school-aged children, and a rehabilitation service for residents and the general public to make use of that service. Just as a note, the applicant may submit development stage plans for the proposed planning development simultaneously with the general concept plan, which they are doing tonight. Just as a comment, the city engineer did do an initial review of the project and has no concerns at this time. They will have to, with the building permit, apply for storm, the stormwater plan will have to be finalized, as well as the stormwater calculations. And we did attach what the stormwater requirements are described as in our stormwater design manual for the city of Brainerd. So, with that, the property is currently zoned Contemporary Neighborhood 2, CN2 zoning district. The CN2 district permits senior housing as a permitted use, child daycare facilities as a conditional use, and does not allow medical clinics. So, with that, that's why they are looking to do this planned unit development overlay zoning district. In addition to that, the base district of CN2 requires a lot frontage of 65 feet to 85 feet, which obviously this development would need something larger, and a maximum lot size of 15,000 square feet. Obviously, this type of development would need something much larger. And so, that's a good use of the PUD overlay district is to allow for things outside of the zoning code for large development projects like this. So, with that, as you go down into there, you can see what staff is proposing. The country manor, it'd be called Country Manor Planned Unit Development, CMPUD. The purpose of the CMPUD is to allow for the development and redevelopment of the property with a mix of uses and dimensional standards. So, I explained the lot width, as well as the lot size requirement would be different from the CN2. The CN2 would be considered the base zoning district. These standards up here is what would be allowed outside of the base zoning district. So, these are the things that deviate from CN2. So, staff is proposing essentially all permitted uses, conditional uses of the CN2, but then in addition to that, allowing childcare facilities as a permitted use instead of a conditional, and then allowing, it'd be essentially office business, which falls under medical, as a conditional use. So, if they wanted to either expand or add some other type of business entity to that, they'd have to come back for a conditional use permit. The other part that staff had recommended adding is that as part of this planned unit development, they would be able to add on to their facility, you know, without having to come back for an amendment to the planned unit development, as long as it meets the dimensional standards of the CN2 district. If they're actually going to add another building to it, then they would have to come back for an updated PUD. So, with that, the city may approve planned unit developments only if it is found that development is in conformance with the comprehensive plan for Brainerd. At a minimum, the city must find that the use will not create an excessive burden on existing parks, schools, streets, and other public facilities and utilities which serve or propose to serve the area. So, with this being a property that solely serves seniors, should not have an increase for, or burden to area schools, the development includes its own open space areas as well for the people living at the proposed Country Manor development, and the development will connect to city sewer, water, and electrical systems. At this time, city engineer and Brainerd Public Utilities has no concerns. Also, the use is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and is compatible with the surrounding land use. City of Corwin County as a whole is in need of diverse housing options, which senior housing is included with that. Part of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan is to provide a diverse mix of housing choices for all stages of life, income ranges, and ownership rental preferences. Policy one states, complement Brainerd's entry-level and affordable housing options by encouraging other move-up and mid-upper-end market rate housing options. Also, policy five, ensure an adequate supply of quality and affordable housing units for current and future residents. Additionally, the planned unit development meets, must meet one or more of the following development criteria according to section 515-5-7C2. So, this really gets into the planned unit development stage portion of it. A minimum of two or more principal structures is proposed. The applicant proposes essentially three buildings connected by a ground-level walkway. The track is at least two acres in size. The size is approximately 54 acres in size, so it does meet this requirement. The planning development can be planned and developed to harmonize with the existing proposed development in areas surrounding the project site. Natural buffers shall be maintained between existing developments and the site. That's kind of on the southern portion, so they're proposing to leave some of those natural buffers there, as well as in some of the other areas to the right-of-way. The surrounding developments are comprised of residential properties and a care facility, so it certainly does fit harmoniously in with some of the surrounding uses as well. Some of the other portions of the development, underground utilities in any planned unit development, all utilities including unlimited telephone, electricity, gas, cable, and television shall be installed underground, which is what they are proposing. Roadways, private design, private roadways within the project shall have an improved surface of 28 feet or more in width and shall be so designed as to permit the city fire trucks to provide protection to each building. The fire chief did review this, as well as city engineer, and there are no concerns and are deemed adequate for the development. Parking staff does believe that the proposed parking areas will sufficiently serve the development, as the applicant is proposing approximately 197 parking stalls and then additional garage stalls as well. Landscaping is required. That a detailed landscape plan has been submitted, and significant natural buffers will be maintained. The applicant is proposing this, as well as they have submitted a detailed landscape plan. Also, best management practices. All planning developments shall incorporate best management practice for stormwater management. There are three stormwater retention areas proposed, and the city engineer, city engineer has reviewed the initial stormwater plan and does not have any concerns at this time. Something to add here, the northern section of this lot is within the shoreline district. We have a shoreline overlay district, and as part of the Gilbert Lake Shoreland District to be specific. Staff had recommended as part of the PUD overlay district, a 75% impervious surface calculation. So, this would be more than what's typically allowed in a CN2. CN2s are typically going to be, you know, could be senior living facilities, but also residential housing. However, this is primarily going to be a commercial property. So, a lot of times in commercial zoning districts, there's actually no limit to the impervious surface. And what's figured into there is whether or not they're retaining all stormwater on site. So, any type of commercial project has to run through the city engineer, has to run through our MS4 permitting procedures to make sure they are retaining all stormwater on site. And just to give a little bit of history on this as well, in the previous, previous application that they had done, as we had revisited from two years ago, there was essentially no limit on the non-shoreland districts because of the previous zoning district allowed 100%. So, staff thought the 75% would be a good balance between residential and commercial development. So, between adding the 25% requirement in the shoreline district in the northern proportion and the 75% that would be allowed in the remainder of the site. and the 75% that would be allowed in the remainder of the site on the southern portion of this, would allow for approximately 60% impervious surface on the proposed lot that country manor is looking to develop. And what they are proposing would meet this requirement. Next portion would be the plat. A lot of the conditions had already been talked about, but I will add a few to these as well. With the plat, the site must be physically suitable for the proposed density of the development. The proposed development is zoned contemporary neighborhood 2 zoning district, and that would be the underlying zoning district. For Lot 1, Block 1, which is the proposed lot for development, which is approximately 36.38 acres, the CN2 district has a density range of four to 12 dwelling units per acre. The property could theoretically accommodate a maximum of 436 dwelling units. So the proposed replat would not exceed that number. So with that, staff is recommending the following. Recommend approval of the rezoning request from CN2 country manor, or 2 country manor planned unit development, CMPUD overlay district, subject to the findings of fact. Number two would be recommend approval of the preliminary plat and final plat, subject to the findings of fact, with the following conditions. Approval of the preliminary plat and final plat are subject to city council approval of the rezoning request. Number three, recommend approval of the PUD general concept plan and development stage plan, subject to the findings of fact, with the following conditions. Approval of the PUD general concept plan and development stage plan are subject to the city council approval of the rezoning request and approval of the preliminary and final plat. Also, final lighting plan conforms to section 515-4-8 of the zoning code and applies the CN2 district standards. And with that, I can certainly answer any questions. The applicants are also here that can answer maybe any architectural detailing as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. So before we move on, I'm just going to pose just a general global question to the group here. We hypothetically could break this apart into a conversation of both of the rezoning, the plat prelim and final, and then a PUD, or we could just choose to move forward and kind of have this as one global monolithic conversation on the entire project in front of us. So, I guess what I'm asking of the group is, unless anyone has an objection to just moving forward with a conversation of all of these kind of at the same time, or someone would like to cultivate some robust conversation on only a certain portion of that, I propose that we just move forward, assuming that we're talking about the rezoning, the plat, and the PUD all at the same time. So unless somebody has an objection to that, I think we'll just do this kind of all-in-one movement. Any head shaking, nods or head shaking? Do you have questions in each part, Mike?
It is monolithic. That's a great word, and some of these are pretty, pretty easy to do of the three applications. Some are pretty easy, and others are going to require some further talk. The conversations will weave. I'm torn on it. I was kind of thinking it might be better, at least in our decision-making, if we could, you know, take testimony and then maybe we come back and and piece it out and tackle each individually, but there may not be advantages to it, but
Well, we could certainly do that. We could certainly take the testimony as one item and then just break these up into segments. But before we open for testimony, I think what we'll do is, is we'll just use the three parts as our rough guide of our questions that we would have. So I'm going to open this up to any questions for staff first regarding the rezoning portion. Yes, please.
For the childcare as being a permitted use, I'm new. Help me understand.
So, in most of our zoning districts right now, childcare facilities are conditional uses. Typically, some of the reasons for that would be, how are they going to affect surrounding neighborhoods? You know, especially, we just saw on the YMCA one, it's kind of in a tighter area of the city. So how is the drop-off zone going to work? How does all that, how does all that work? With this being such a large site, staff's interpretation of that or recommendation is that because it's an overlay district, change it from a conditional use to a permitted use because it is so large. And if they need to do an expansion onto there, they just simply could, because it's not really going to affect surrounding properties.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for staff in the general box of rezoning? It's kind of a big box. These are all big boxes, but, yes, please.
How close is that to the North Town development, and will that hinder future growth for that?
So, right now, you can see the North Town development, if you want to scroll down a little bit. So that bottom line, or one up. So right now, they're proposing a little bit more. So, there we go. So on the southern portion there, there's a pretty good natural buffer between that and the North Town development. That bottom line right there would be kind of your line along North Town, so that'd be adjacent to some people's backyards. So, the proposed development that they're doing is, would be on the north side of the property. So if they didn't want to add additional buildings down there, they would have to come in to amend their planned unit development, and at that time, there'd be another public hearing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Anything else on the rezoning box? Yes, please.
Question for staff here, again on the imperviousness. So the 75% imperviousness would be for the entire project area, including shoreline? Or is that saying 75% within the non-shoreland?
Within the non-shoreland would be 75%.
Thank you.
That's pretty close to my question here that I'm going to jump in with. So, on the shoreline district, are we asking for a stormwater retention plan on just that portion? Or no stormwater plan for any of the property, or I'm a little fuzzy on where we're asking, where we're not?
So what we'd essentially do is, we'd figure out what our impervious surface allowable would be for roughly about a quarter of the top portion of that property. 25% is allowed impervious there. The bottom part, 75% would be allowed. So when you kind of add both those numbers together, the entire site's allowed 60% impervious surface. But on top of that, because we're looking, because we're working with commercial development rather than single-family homes, stormwater requirement would be done throughout the entire development. So all stormwater have to be, would all, would have to be maintained, not only for the shoreline district, but also for the CN2 overlay district. So, yeah, stormwater calculations as well as stormwater plans.
But it's not a different stormwater calc for the shoreline part and the other part?
It's a water retention, yep.
Gotcha. That was my question. Anything else in the rezoning kind of category, general area for staff? Okay, so any questions for staff in the plat portion of this, of what's in front of us? And finally, any questions on the PUD version, portion of what's in front of us for staff? All right, without any further questions, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to open the public hearing. So just like the last time, we're going to invite the applicant to come forward first. I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing here at 6:38. Applicant or applicant representative, whoever would like to come, is more than welcome to come on up. Just tell us what you've got cooking. You don't have to, or field any questions from us. And we'll probably follow the same basic layout here, rezoning first, then plat, then PUD. So just kind of hang out if we don't have anything. And then, following the applicant, if we have anybody who would like to come forward, either in support or against this, same thing, why have you come up, name, and so forth. So at this time, we'll ask the applicant or applicant representative forward. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come up here. My name is Brian Kelm, and I have the privilege of serving as the chief executive officer of the Country Manor organization. We've been here before. We started this project at the beginning of the pandemic. We got slowed down, and we're back. So, we're happy about that. Tell you a little bit about Country Manor, and then we'll get into this project. Country Manor started in 1970 down in Sartell, Minnesota. It started as a 60-bed nursing facility. And over the course of time, that 25 acres went from 60 beds to 165 beds and 240-plus apartments, a child daycare center of 149 children, a convenience store with a pharmacy and a physician's clinic in it. It's roughly 5,000 square feet. We have Champion Rehab, we have non-transportation, or non-emergency transportation. We have a certified Medicare home care agency. We have Drake's, which is a restaurant. And so, I may have missed one or two of our umbrella companies, but I say all that because when we started, our mission is about enriching lives. It's to enrich the quality of life by providing superior health care and services. And so our ears are open, and we listen to what their wants and needs are. And that's why a lot of these amenities came to life. It was due to the quality of life of the people we serve. And so, a few years back, Country Manor in Sartell ran out of space, and our next venture was in St. Joe. That was opened in 2017. It's 84 units. It's built on over 100 acres. It's very picturesque, and we have senior apartments, assisted living, and memory care out there at the present time. And we're very proud of that project. And we are now here tonight to talk about the Brainerd project again. And this particular project is 106 units as it sits today. So we continue to learn, and things continue to change as the pandemic moves forward. And what we've learned, there's been new regulations since we first approached you folks, and that is the Department of Health came in with new regulations for assisted living. And with the pandemic, we all know that the staffing availability has changed. So we downsized a few of our apartments on the Mid-America, and we increased high acuity. So our ability to handle heavy care, and we're going to position that next to the memory care. And we have 12 of those units that will be entering into the mix, which will allow us to have synergies with our staffing and also allow folks to better age in place on that campus once they move in, so they do not have to move out due to just the care. But we do have a child daycare center, as he said, 92 children. We've had the opportunity to be in daycare since 1986 and be part of the community. We have 44 units of senior apartments where we can facilitate assisted living services. These units have a few less amenities in them. Our goal is to hit a price point. And so, you see different heating systems, through-the-wall air conditioners, single baths, and just a few things that are different so that we can bring down the price point. The other 32 units, their square footage of the Mid-America is anywhere from 650 to 950 square feet. Up on the other side, they start at 1,000 and move over 1,250 square feet. And they have decks, they have the washer-dryers, they have individual furnaces in them, they have the second baths in them. The fit and finish is just a little different on that side, again, to allow choice. When we get into our memory care, it's modeled after our Woodcrest project, and so we look a lot at who we're serving. So we have the continuous hallways, we have the programming set up in there, and we really allow our staff to always be able to see what's happening. So if they're documenting, they can still be engaged with the folks that they're serving. And then, the final piece is the high acuity, which will be stationed in the same area and will allow nurses to view all the high care and memory care area at the same time as we go through the different times of the days and so forth. The one piece we changed from the last time that we were here is, we were talking about outpatient rehab, which is an important piece of our day, and also our home care agency, which services the community, and we would have that stationed on the campus. So that gives you a little, hopefully, a little background and a little bit about what we're proposing right now. And I'll turn it back over and willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kelm. Okay, do we, we're going to open this up to just kind of some questions for the applicant here, and we're going to kind of follow our rezoning plat and PUD. So we have any rezoning category? Yes, please, Mr. Duvall.
Welcome back, Ms. Kelm, and I'm just as excited to see you here this time as we did a few years ago when you came here. It's a great, great project idea and something very much needed in the Brainerd Lakes area. And in your introduction, you talked about your other facilities, and you talked about a convenience store and pharmacy. Is that sort of part of your immediate plans or near-term plans for this particular campus?
That would not be in phase one. You know, they take, they take labor. And so we decided that if a restaurant or a convenience store would be brought in, it would be at a later phase. And we'd address it at the time if we believed the need was there. We'd love to have it in phase one, but we don't believe it would be ready to roll at this time. We believe that would be a tough hole for us.
Just, might be easier to do it now than later, or an additional step. If you're thinking it's out there, it might be, might be good to have it in the discussion now while we're already got the books, planning to, you know, an action out of this would be amending the ordinance, and so if
Sure.
I would look to you to say whether you're interested in that. And what I'm hearing is it's not queued up, but if there's a plan, it might be a good idea to maybe make that request while, while we're making our decisions here today. I'll let you think about that.
Sure. Well, I, what I would tell you, and I appreciate your input, is in the next five years, we do not see that happening. But if it's sometime in the future, if you believe it would be better for us to incorporate that into the PUD now so we have flexibility, we're very open to that idea. But we, it's nothing that we could guarantee, you know, until that time presents itself.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Additional questions related to the drawing that's upright now, this view of the plat? I think when you came here before, we had discussions about potential, what are called natural heritage features, some wildlife plants, things like that, that occur on this site or may occur on this site. And I think my recommendation was that you might reach out to DNR on that. I'm wondering if you had a chance to do that, because that has potential bearing on your construction work and such. Was that something you were able to do?
Sure. I cannot personally answer that. I would look over behind me to the architect and ask Evan if there was any conversations with the Minnesota DNR.
Evan Larson with GLT Architects. Of course, it's been a bit since we were back, right? So there's been a lot of work done, but a lot of work done at the time. We're working with Westwood Engineering Firm to do the civil engineering work and site design. I haven't personally, however, after that conversation, we did discuss that with our civil engineer, and I believe those conversations were had. I don't want to convey that I know for sure what happened or what all went down, but that I remember that conversation and having that with civil engineers, so.
So it'll still have likely, it would still be a wise thing to do, to do that reach out there, and it would really be, I think, provide good protections for natural resource features that may occur or do occur on that site. And DNR can speak and guide you more on that. So, thank you, Kevin, and thank you very much as well. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions in kind of the rezone? Yes, please, Mr. Kelm.
I have a follow-up on Mr. Duvall's question. Is the land dry? Or is there any water features, you know, fens, swamps, anything, or is it just dry? How would you describe the land?
Sure. Well, I can just speak to the terrain, which is pretty flat up there, but I can look to Evan to talk about, a little bit about how the design will look after it's fully developed.
I have the site plan. I'm not sure who's in control of the drawings up there, but is the current site diagram available? My vision isn't quite good enough to see the numbers on there, but there's some very large kind of blobs upper left, for example. That's a water infiltration feature. Most of the current design and water infiltration is just that. They don't tend to carry water. They're infiltrating this by design for current standards. But there are three major locations of that. There's one just south of the main parking lot. You can see another oblong shape down there. And then one to the southeast, you'll see kind of an L-shaped spaceland there. So those are the water on-site, water infiltration features. Again, not necessarily carrying water, but that would be, you know, for stormwater usage. There's, the landscaping plan, as you can see on there, is developed in more detail on a different plan. But to directly answer the question, there isn't water features per se. It's just the water infiltration is required to treat stormwater. Does that answer?
There are no swamps? There's no wet, no swampy areas?
To my knowledge, the, I mean, we've been out there several times. I don't believe there's any natural occurring water, lowland areas or that sort of thing, so.
Any other questions for the applicant on the rezoning portion? If not, we'll move on to kind of plat questions. I have none either. Any PUD questions? And none of those. All right, so very good. So what we're going to do here is, we're just going to open this up to anybody else that would like to come forward, that would like to speak on the, on the application in front of us. Here's your time. Very good. Very good. Please state your name and address. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Troy Nelson, 9208 Twin Street. I just had two questions. Will Wild or Warrior be extended into the property? As I don't feel that those roads can handle it, additional traffic. And number two, last time we were here, they talked about the plan leaving the trees that are just to the south of that, leaving that as the barrier, the ones that are there already. And is that still the plan?
Very good. Thank you. Was it Mr. Nelson? Was that right? Okay, very good. So, I'll just speak to that, Mr. Nelson, if I could, please. James will be the guy that'll help you understand all those questions. He's a fantastic guy. And if you just drop into the office, I'm sure he'll be able to get all your questions about the dynamics of the project understood. So, but thanks for coming and speaking up, so. Do we have anybody else in the gallery or anyone else here who would like to speak on this? Yes, if so, please come forward.
Kathy Dolmeyer. I'm 15277 Clearview Lane. It's hard to understand the maps that we've gotten. And I guess our main question is, how close is this development going to be behind Clearview Lane or Twin Street over there? And then, is there going to be, are they going to make road access on that end to get in and out of the development? Or is it all just going to be off Beaver Dam Road?
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kathy. James, is there something you want to address now? Or would you prefer to have citizens come in and sit down and talk with you?
Maybe we can get kind of through all, if there's anybody else who would like to speak.
Yeah, please.
And I can answer some questions.
Are you, anybody else? All right. So, with that, I think unless we have any other questions for our applicant or anyone else to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing here at 6:52. James, I will give you the opportunity to address these if you want. If not, again, James will be more than happy to sit down with you or talk you through any of your questions that you have. But I am going to give James the opportunity to address some of those high-level questions here without getting us too far into the weeds tonight. This isn't really the time we have set aside to understand the project as much as it is to kind of, you know, comment on the work that we have here. So, James, I'll turn it over to you here real quick.
Yeah, so I'll discuss within the plat. Brent, if you want to pull the plat up again. So, you see there are potential extensions from two of the roads from North Town. Those are just easement areas for the city, you know, if needed. There's property to the north of this one even that is for sale right now. There's also vacant land to be to the east of it. But at this time, there's no consideration. It's just going to be an access from Beaver Dam Road as a private entrance. You know, if the city would continue to develop higher density in this area, maybe there'd be a future need. But there'd be other public hearings, you know, for those plats and such. So, there'd be another time to speak out about that if that was the case. But for this development, that's not going to be happening. It's just going to be an access, a private road from Beaver Dam. Then the other question, directly behind the Clearview area, is a different property. This property, I guess, would be kind of kitty corner to it. So, if you'd be in the, if you go down to the bottom west corner of the property here, so there's the North Town development. Just to the, it'd just be to the west of the North Town development would be the Clearwater or Clearview Road. So, because they're leaving that southern area without development, there'd certainly be, at this point, a significant buffer between those properties in North Town as well as Clearview Lane from any type of development here. So, if they were to propose another building in that southern portion, there would be another chance for a public hearing at that point.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Okay, and again, any further questions? James is more than happy to help you out, understanding any of the dynamics of the project here. So, with that, I'm going to swing it back to us, the esteemed Planning Commission, for consideration of the testimony we've heard and what we've got in front of us. So, and I think we'll take this again, segment by segment, just to break it up into workable-sized chunks here. So, I'm going to start with kind of the rezoning aspect of what we've got in front of us and open it up for anyone who'd like to speak. And second call on the rezoning side? Nothing, Mr. Duvall? You're good?
Well, I...
It's kind of an overlap. They're kind of all attached to each other.
And I think I'm pretty comfortable with, you know, the responses of staff to getting at the nature of the questions of how we think about the 75%. And what I'm hearing is that the 75% is applying to the non-shorland areas. And so, we'll give staff a moment to take care of an issue here. But I want to be clear that the 75% impervious surface is, that we're proposing in this ordinance, applies to the non-shorland area. And it's not 75% of the entire parcel that we just saw on the plat. Can we, do I have the understanding right? I'm struggling with it.
So, that's correct. So, what's out of the Shoreland District would be 75%. In the Shoreland District's 25%, but they are one parcel.
Yes.
So, you know, per recommendation, when this first came up with Swanson-Haskamp, is you calculate them. So, 25% is allowed over the 10 acres, which would allow, you know, approximately 2,500 square feet of that first part to be developed, or not, or 2.5 acres, I should say. And then, the bottom would be calculated at 75%. And then, you add the two numbers together. So, you're looking at approximately a 60% impervious surface over the entire property.
So, functionally, what we're doing is we're trading the impervious surface that has been stripped away by the Shoreland District. And we're allowing that to be moved across the Shoreland line to the non-shorland area so that functionally, you still get 60% on that parcel.
Yep, that's correct.
And so, when I see the 75% here, I wouldn't mind seeing a qualifier on there about non-shorland. Just so that we're not doing this math again, and suddenly, we're up to 85 or 90% imperviousness, or you simply say that the impervious surface shall be averaged across Shoreland and non-Shoreland to be 60%. Because I think the math is what you're doing. I think it's doing the averaging. But I want to be clear that what the imperviousness is, is applied. So, we're thinking about it globally for the entire project. And I feel like that's what the guidance of Ms. Haskamp was on that.
It was.
So, if you might make a recommendation or help me, how I would look at this in the future, myself removed, yourself removed, and a lot of us removed from the picture and another individual interpreting this ordinance, and they see a proposal come forward and say, "Well, gosh, you've still got a bunch of imperviousness, so you can apply."
And we could put that into the final stage plan of the planned unit development. So, it's right in the findings of fact. Would something like that work to explain it?
I have a wrinkle to add to this conversation before.
Wrinkle away. Crinkle and wrinkle.
Anyone else before? Yes, please.
Just a dumb question. Where does the Shoreline District start? Can somebody, is it like the top?
So, we just had the previous, see if we can go back to what we had previously up there. Do you see that kind of dotted line right there at the top?
The loopy line? Oh, like going like this? Oh, that's the Shoreline? Okay, okay, thank you.
So, within, this is a general development lake with Lake Gilbert. That actually extends 1,000 feet in versus rivers, I think, are 300 or 500 feet. So, it's a non-riparian lot. It's not on the lake. There's a whole nother development, I guess, in front of it or a whole, you know, large parcel as well. I think another 40 acre. But a portion of it is within the Shoreland District. It's not a riparian lot, though it's actually on the lake.
So, then our concern is what impacts would be from this site going into Gilbert, correct? That would be a potential concern?
Yep. And with that, because this is a commercial development, really, there's not a concern with that because of the stormwater requirements. Water is retained, is required to be fully retained on-site on commercial projects. If it were a housing development for, say, single-family homes, then there's an increase in trying to figure out the right impervious surface percentage because single-family homes are not required to maintain their water on-site, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, my wrinkle to this is, what I'm not sure, what I'm a little fuzzy on is, are we saying that the impervious is stuck at this, which would then say there is no future development here? We are tapped out in our impervious. So, my question is not what the, I understand all of this. But are we also, at the same time, as a condition of this project, saying you get no more future impervious under any circumstance? Again, to the question of future development on this property or expansion within or so forth. So, that's what I'm fuzzy about is...
Yeah, so, on this particular piece right here, as it stands right now, it'd be allowed at 60% over the entire site. I don't know exactly where the impervious surface number comes in at for this one. I'm guessing it's less than that. So, there would be potential for future. The other thing they could do is then come back for a proposed development and potentially increase that impervious if needed and if shown to be a potential development.
But that would be a standalone permit on itself, not necessarily attached to us approving the impervious surface today on this property. We're just, got it. Got it. I think I got it. Okay. All right. Any other questions? I think we're onto the PUD part, right? I'm sorry, I'm a little...
Well, I think staff was suggesting tying the imperviousness to the PUD. Could you just help me clarify where your thought process was to say, rather than put an asterisk here next to 75% or parentheses, "non-shoreland", you were thinking you could connect it in a different way to the development?
You know, yeah, we could put it as part of the development in the final stage, you know, development plan and part of the development agreement. So, it'd be in writing, but we could certainly add it to the ordinance as well. Whether it gets added to the table or whether it gets added to a condition and how it comes in, you know, maybe it's just simply added to the table. If Planning Commission would like to add that, I certainly could for the city council meeting.
It feels like, it feels like it needs to be here so that it's, we're clear about what the 75% means. And again, we already know Shoreland's limiting you to 25%. That, the developers here will manage that. And we are providing them the guidance as to where the 75% comes into play. And we're saying that's in the non-shoreland area. So, they get that balance. They get that credit, if you would, out of Shoreland. And you can bump their density above 60% to still arrive at, the overall parcel is in harmony with the CN2 imperviousness on the underlying district, so.
Yeah, my concern is that we don't prohibit future growth on this property because of what we do with impervious decisions tonight. That was my main point. Do you feel like you have an understanding of the guidance that we're asking for here on where to place that?
Yeah, we should make, you know, if Planning Commission would like to add it to the table, I'd say make that as part of the motion.
Okay.
To add...
Hope you're right.
The impervious surface explanation. I'd say call it the impervious surface explanation and calculations to the table.
Correct. Very good. Any other questions regarding the, yes, please?
James, when it comes to the council packet, can you include in that map, maybe some color coding and explaining that math a little bit?
Yep.
More? Because if Planning Commission has questions about it, council's going to struggle.
Certainly can.
Thank you.
I think that was a compliment in some ways he asked for it.
Just don't tell the rest of the city council.
And one thing to note for city council, the applicant has asked for it to be at the second meeting in July.
Okay. Excellent.
Very good. Any other questions regarding rezoning plat or PUD for staff or anyone else on what we have in front of us here? Anything else, Mr. Duvall? I just saw you rifling through your papers, so I'm just...
Well, I'm always rifling through my papers. But there is, you know, if we are going to be making this draft as part of our recommendations tonight, there's a minor type of typo in there as well that we'll want to fix, so.
And you can touch base with James on that, on typography. Okay, so, with all of that behind us down, we are back to someone taking a stab at a motion here, if there is one in the room, so. And...
Are you asking for the mega motion?
Actually, for the mega motion here, yes, I am, yep. They really are all connected here. So, I mean, we could hypothetically break this apart. Well, that's a good question for you guys. Would you rather have three motions here and go rezoning plat and PUD? If you're thinking about it from the applicant's perspective, I'm sure if one of the three does not go through, the project is not viable. So, it'd be a formality, in my opinion.
And maybe a question to staff on a procedure on here. We've got a preliminary plat that we're going to, and then a final plat. And do we need to take separate votes on those? Because one could be, the city council may say, "I don't like the final plat" or whatever. It seems like procedurally, in the ordinance, it's saying you vote on this and then applicant comes back with a final. But we're bundling them together, and that's where I'm...
Yep, so, in a lot of simple plats like this, they are combined in most cities. I asked the city attorney with that, if there was some type of major change that needed to be done, you can essentially table the final plat if needed, but they could just be part of the same motion, essentially.
All right. So, then I will make a mo, oh, boy. I will make, and it's buried in... I saw you write it down. I know it's over there.
I know.
And I'm, just real quickly, I'm assuming Tiffany, the council would prefer to have this as...
As one.
As one, yeah. So, I think we're helping our partners who sit at the same bench.
And I guess the one thing that staff would add in there, so I did put those stipulations on there. You'll see approval of the preliminary plat and final plat are subject to approval of the rezoning request because technically, those couldn't be done without the rezoning, just because of the lot sizes. So, there was some conditions upon approval of this, approval of this. And there's a specific order that I did that for that reason.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to take a shot at it.
Very good. We're ready.
Motion to recommend approval of the rezoning request from CN2 to Country Manor Planned Unit Develop an Overlay District Subject to the Findings of Fact and the addition of an explanatory note on impervious coverage. That's your volley. Thank you. Recommend approval of the preliminary plat and final plat subject to findings of fact with the following conditions. Approval of the preliminary plat and final plat are subject to city council approval of the rezoning request. And then, finally, recommend approval of the PUD General Concept Plan and the Development Stage Plan Subject to the following findings of fact listed on the staff recommendations. And with that...
Very good. That's going to be you, Tiffany, doing that.
Yeah, I know.
Did you, okay, very good.
Pictures with colors.
Yeah, we can't really do the so-move thing. It's, good job, well done. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Then we got a second. Any further discussion? Please, Mr. Kramvik.
I did add two conditions or staff recommended conditions under the General Concept and Development Stage Plan, that essentially, those would be requirement for the final plat and preliminary plat to be approved, as well as if Planning Commission would like to figure lighting into here, that it would essentially be the CN2 zoning district standards.
Ah, okay.
Thank you. And those were in there, my motion by reference.
Motion by reference, okay.
Consistent with staff recommendations.
Perfect.
On those, so.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And just in closing, before James, I'd just like to say thank you very much for wanting to build in Brainerd. I'm sure you have many opportunities of where you could choose to build this. But we certainly appreciate your diligence in wanting to be here. And thank you for staff. This packet looks like a lot of work on all parties here. So, thank you, everyone, for putting in the investment of time and effort to make this happen. Be a great thing for Brainerd. Now, James, I'll turn it over to you for any guidance on what's going to happen next.
Yes, thank you. So, as we discussed, you guys had requested the meeting to be moved to the second meeting in July, which should be July 17th, Monday, at 7:30 at City Council. And we'll be in contact before then. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We're excited for you to come.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to our new and exciting item, the newly added, much anticipated, unknown item of 7C. This is a community art feature space. And I'm going to turn this over to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Duvall, here to get us up to speed.
Vacation slides.
Yeah, the vacation slides.
So... So, thinking about down... So, thinking about downtown development and downtown redevelopment, it, I, I would like us to be able to make a formal request for any redevelopment downtown, and I have a specific one in mind, which is the Thrifty White site, that if we lose any of sort of the downtown feature art, these murals and things, you know, examples are up here. The center one is the one on the Phelps Brothers Building, and that, that is adjacent to the Thrifty White site. If we were to lose that, it would be, it would be something, I think, appropriate for the council or the commission to, to request that the applicant consider working with our local arts community, whether that's the Crossing Arts Alliance or some other group. You think about what we have around town, you know, down at the Northern Pacific Center, when you drive by on 13th, they got one of the large arch doors, they have that picture of the railroad workers there, right? And it defines who we are as a community or where we've been as a community. And I have other examples, the one on the right is up in this one, the one on the left is over in Crosby, a number of murals there. And they're, they are cool. They, they, they bring our arts in a big canvas like that, and it, and, and I think it doesn't have to be a, a dedicated space or something like that that's required of the applicant. You have to put in art, you know, you have to put in a statue. You know, I'm not really suggesting, I am suggesting that, you know, particularly if we lose, lose this mural on 8th, it would be nice if they had a similar place and they would be, be able to, to work with the local arts community, be able to put something up there that sort of continues that theme, that captures the essence of Brainerd. And, and I, we'd be interested in other people's thoughts on that, whether that's out of line or whether we have a general feeling that, yeah, it'd be nice to ask the, the developers there and future developers and redevelopers to, to think about working with our communities without requiring them to. So that's the gist of that, and these are my summer vacation pictures.
Oh, I was, yeah, well, like Tiffany, you didn't get very far. I mean, not to, not to criticize your summer vacation, but it looks like you made it about 55 miles.
They're, they're all near beer.
Kudos to you on the vacation photos anyways. So, all right, so great, thanks for bringing this forward. I'm just gonna open a little quick roundtable discussion here. Anybody who wants to chime in on this? I know I have a couple of quick thoughts, but, yeah, Don, please.
I have lots of thoughts about public art. I was involved in a project many years ago at the old co-op location at 9th and Washington, and we decided to put a Monet on the building. And the landlord looked at us like, who is Monet and why do I wanna put a picture of Monet on there?
Was that a bridge?
And as soon as the person could paint it over, they painted it over. So I, I, I love the idea of public art. I think there should be more, but we always should recognize it's always gonna be controversial. It will be. And I like the idea of asking developers and redevelopers to support it. I would like to see a little, little bit of money, a little bit of bling behind it. We can spend all day long turning to the arts community and say, why don't you paint something? Paint's expensive. There are neat programs out there. We did the mural at the co-op, using a Valspar. Had a grant program. We did it through Valspar. It was great, worked out. But I would love to see a little bit of, you know, tiny requirement. I mean, if you had $3,000, you can pay it a bunch with $3,000. You can do a lot. And so I'm all about this, but I think we need to recognize the peril of public art, that it will be controversial. And we need to recognize, we can talk about it all day long, but you gotta fund it. I would love to know how they did the funding up in Crosby and how they did that. And so, yeah, I've got a lot of thoughts about it, and those are just a few.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll chime in. Hugh, I love this stuff. I actually have looked at doing some of this work on one of my buildings. I'm just a huge fan. The Minneapolis area, the wall art down there has transformed many parts of the North Loop, Crosby. Excellent work over there, amazing stuff. I can tell you that I know from experience, it's really expensive work to have done or to, to get done. So I'm not really all that interested in mandating this work to people with projects. I think it's more of a soft ask and help you find funding kind of thing, kind of. My biggest concern with this, and maybe we reach out to the people at Crosby, is, is how do they filter what is acceptable, what's not acceptable, the subjectivity that enters the room, anything regarding this type of work? I mean, obviously, what we see here, it's a no-brainer. Everyone likes it. But I think we could very quickly find ourselves in a position of where somebody's wanting to do something in front of us and we're all slumping in our seat a little bit, bit, saying, what are we getting ourselves into here? So that's my only concern, but I, I fully support this type of work, especially in the urban environment, the downtown environment. So thanks for bringing it, for sure. And it might be worth just reaching out to the people at Crosby. How do you permit this? How do you, do people show up and say, yes, we like it, no, we don't like it? How does it get funded? Might be a great thing, because Crosby is a fantastic model, both of our city-sized town and the, the refacing that's happened over there. And I will also say that in the cities, they paint utility boxes. So these are like electrical boxes, mailboxes, PEDs for utilities in like, in plant life and organic life, and it is like the coolest thing ever. So just throwing that out there, too. Looks really cool. Yeah.
Quick thing to add, Little Falls has been doing it for 25 years, long before it was hip anywhere else. Little Falls has been doing it, so that's another, yet another community. And I'm all about going after utility boxes, all that stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I would say that Crosby, they have, they have a mural or plaque on each one of these murals that are up there in the city, and it recognizes a funding source, and so there are funding sources that are obviously capturing to fund this work. And, and we could facilitate that as, as a city. The Crossing Arts Alliance could facilitate that, you know. Five Wings Regional Arts Council could, could have a role. You know, we don't have to necessarily get in there and orchestrate, and it may not have to be wall art. It could be, it could be, you know, a mosaic on a, in an entry foyer. It could be, you know, tile or work or something like that.
Sculptural, also.
It can be, you know, it can be whatever. Here we, here we have the potential that we might lose a wall mural, and they're gonna have some large walls that aren't gonna be glass, and, and it could be the opportunity for in-kind. But that would be, that would be my request, is to, that we would send a, a letter to, to the particular developer looking at redeveloping the Thrifty Whites, to, to make a request to say, can you, at this point in time, you know, consider reaching out to the arts community to do something like that? Particularly if the Phelps Building is, is included in the footprint of that project.
Awesome. Well, it sounds like we've got some general energy behind this, so just to make sure this conversation doesn't die tonight, do we, Mr. Duval, do you have any thoughts on just how city staff could help us just kinda keep this going? Or anything we'd like to see?
You know, what we could do is, is perhaps just ask them to maybe direct, draft a letter for us to be able to just review.
Sure.
In the spirit of this conversation, and, and maybe look under the hood at some of these other communities as to, is there any, any ordinance kinds of, of issues? We've already got a couple of these in the city, so I don't think we have a permitting issue or an ordinance barrier. It sounds like it's funds and, and being able to, to, to get an artist to be able to spend the, spend the time with the concept. Selecting, I would say selecting what that art looks like might be, might be the decision of the canvas owner. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
They own the canvas and they're, it would be on their building or, or whatever, so leave that to those folks to decide what that art looks like.
Sure. You got enough, James?
Yeah, so we can provide a staff report, and we'll just do some, some research on Little Falls and Crosby, and, and then let's maybe make a motion if you guys would like staff to draft a letter, and that can be reviewed at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Very good.
That motion has been made.
Very good. We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We got lots of seconds, so pick one you got there, and any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward, Mr. Duval. All right, we're gonna move on to item 8A. This is our eight, our unfinished business. 8A will be first, first and only, actually. This will be our off-street parking ordinance summary. James, please?
Yeah, so I'll let Dylan start this one. We'll both kinda go with this a little bit here, but Dylan can kinda introduce us here, and we'll explain what staff is proposing.
All right, so to give a brief overview, we have five sections here that handle various pieces of the existing parking ordinance. Section one is rather simple. It's striking the exemptions for parking requirements. The direction that we received was that we were putting in maximums. Therefore, exceptions from minimum parking requirements would be redundant if we are actually moving towards a maximum amount of parking spaces. Section two is also a bit simple. It tackles section 515-4-12F, and that is our section on what calculates space. And we added a section in there to define the term "building footprint", which will come into play later in our other sections. In section three, that is where we get into dealing with allowing rear parking in the rear 30 feet of lots.
See, I'll just kind of expand on that one quick.
It's more your.
Yeah, so with that, the Community Development Department does receive a number of complaints, especially on corner properties where you see vehicles across the entire backyard. So with this, there's different setbacks and different rear setbacks for all different properties in Brainerd. So essentially, one idea that staff had was essentially rear yard to 30 feet, you're allowed to park on an unimproved surface at that point. So, so that's with, you know, it could be grass, it could be anything. You know, a lot of houses have alleys which aren't required to have improved surfaces. That would still be consistent with that. Could be moved to 40 feet, you know, if we've decided that's necessary for even like large campers. But staff thought 30 feet would be appropriate. That way, it kinda leaves the portion of the backyard, that's supposed to be the backyard from, from visibility, to not be allowed to park on grass. Still could do some type of an improved surface in that area, but we do get a number of complaints from, you know, multiple vehicles parking on the grass throughout the entire backyard. So consideration in, in that, in that section to help alleviate some of the concerns of the community.
All right. Section four is by far the largest section. Functionally, it, it places a maximum area for off-street parking, and that we note that that shall not exceed the allowable square footage as depicted in the table 515-4-12.2 for the affected zoning districts. In that table, you'll note that Town Center, Main Street, General Commercial, Makers and Employment, General Industrial and Public Semi-Public have a maximum parking lot surface area, including stalls, aisles, that shall not exceed the building footprint area present at the premises, and any proposed parking lot greater than that maximum would only be allowed upon a conditional use permit.
So I'll jump in on that one quick. Brent, if you could pull up some of the pictures that we have. So we tried to show this in a couple of different areas. I think the first one's the hospital, where you're looking at kinda parking to, to building footprint. In this instance, it would exceed it. So in the case of the hospital, they'd have to get a conditional use permit in order to increase parking. Obviously, we have other standards for, for some of these districts as well with conditional use permits, but here's one example where the surface parking area exceeds the footprint. If you wanna go to the next one, Brent? So this one is, was this Hardee's?
Yes.
Okay. So kind of another example here of the building footprint. Now, part of this we'd probably exclude here, which would be the actual drive-through lane. So it's not quite as, as large, but you can see, you know, the parking lot could probably still have the, the front parking lot with the spaces, but it's really that rear parking lot that's unused. You know, it could still be owned by them, could still be green space, but if it's green space, it's maybe more potentially developable by a, by a developer rather than having his parking lot space. So one example here where, you know, the, a, a new ordinance restricting it to the building footprint could have an effect to, to leave potential developable lot undeveloped instead of turning into parking lot. If you wanna go to the next one, Brent? So here's an example of Ace Hardware. You see, this one's pretty much a, a one-to-one. So with the new proposed ordinance, Ace Hardware and the other buildings, essentially that parking lot is sized appropriately with a maximum. Maybe that parking lot's not full all the time. So, you know, there still is room, you know, within that maximum allowable, you know, area to not restrict things to be too small. But it, the maximum does at least give some type of restrictions to, and make people consider parking lot space. If you wanna go to the next one, Brent?
It goes up on the 4th of July.
It does. Here's an example of Harrison Elementary. You can see with this one, it's, they still needed a conditional use and would need a conditional use to expand anything in here, you know, parking lot included. But for this one, you can see the parking lot's smaller than the building, so it wouldn't be an issue for this one. Also did took, take a look at a number of industrial properties. Really not an issue there either, because we're exempting off-street loading. Some of those industrial buildings are just quite large and have large indoor storage facilities. So I don't think it'd be really an issue there when you're looking at, you know, not, not having off-street loading requirements as part of this calculation there. So haven't seen this in a lot of zoning codes, but I guess that staff gave a lot of thought to this on how could we, you know, have an easier, easier calculation for this rather than having some long table of all these different types of uses and, you know, trying to figure it out by that way, two spaces for every, you know, 300 square feet. Staff believes that this could be a, a pretty easy way to do things. I, you know, I don't think there'll be a lot of major issues. Here's Mid-Minnesota. Again, typically parking lot is, you know, not, not full at all times. The, the drive-through lane for the, the ATM machine would not be calculated towards that total. So that one's pretty close there, but, you know, probably a little bit larger than what's necessary based on the size of the building. And then, again, there's still, you know, if there's a need for it, you know, and, and they can validate the reasons for expanding, it could be done potentially through a conditional use permit to allow that extra parking there. So there's still a, a potential to add it if needed. So with that, I'll turn that back to Dylan for some of our other areas.
Yes, thank you for that explanation on that. Part two of that fourth section also includes that the following number of off-street parking spaces shall be provided and maintained by ownership easement and/or lease during the life of their respective uses hereinafter set forth. So that this section is going to handle the few areas that we do need minimum space calculations, mostly residential and other commercial uses that makes sense to have minimums. But just to note in point A here, we thought we would handle the guidance on bicycles and bicyclists by basically copying a piece of code that the City of Rochester, Minnesota, and the City of Branson, Missouri, used, which basically allowed commercial or multifamily dwellings to substitute one parking space for five bicycle parking spaces, and we set a minimum of 10 for the, basically the minimum number of spaces you can have in a parking lot and use that to replace one. This would encourage bikeability of the city, but it would also give developers some way to sort of cut down further on that minimum parking allotment. The table that is in.
The, yeah. I'll maybe expand on the table a little bit. So one of the main things you'll see in here is that instead of going from, you know, for a single-family home, two spaces required, for multifamily, two and a quarter. Did look at doing, especially for multifamily, attached single-family dwellings, going to a tiered system. So we've heard from developers in the past that, you know, that there's a lot of apartments that are moving to either one-bedroom or studios, and that two and a quarter for something like that, you know, just may be excessive and create just astronomically sized parking lots. So you'll see this with studios, there'd be a one space with one bedroom, there'd be a space and a half, and kinda so on incrementally up as, as you, as you add bedrooms to the, the attached family and multifamily dwelling units. Also did include. Also did include for, we separated single-family and duplex to two spaces per unit, and then did also add in, did we add in accessory?
Uh, yes, we did add accessory dwelling units to the...
So then, the other thing, the kind of the big question here to consider tonight, do we want to have parking minimums in our residential districts? So right now, staff did keep a few of these in here as parking minimums for these zoning districts. Certainly, staff does believe we need it for the actual living facilities. The ones that are included in here are potentially ones that don't require conditional use permits in zoning districts, or have a residential feel to it, either nursing homes or similar group housing, boarding houses. They are going to be conditional use permits, but it's actually people living there. So do we, you know, do we want to have minimum requirements there in addition to like a single-family home? And then also like commercial and retail establishments, like for say, for instance, in a TN2 district would just be permitted. So there's no review from Planning Commission or City Council for a conditional use permit. Do we want a minimum requirement for something like that? Or do we just want it to completely take away all minimums? So that's something to consider here as well, as we're working through this draft ordinance. So, and with that, creating the smaller table here for minimum uses essentially struck out all of the other language for minimum uses based on all the other uses. With that, I think we're, can answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. There's a lot to take in there.
Wow, okay, very good. So I'm going to suggest that we break this up into the one, two, three, four parts, just so we can take this in segments. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to just ask that we start with section one, see if we have any questions for staff in section one, and we just kind of move through these one at a time versus jumping all over the place here. So section one is our off-street parking. This is pretty, this is our easy one. This is one of the easy ones here. Do we have anybody who wants to speak to this? Or any, I guess, global questions before we start into section by section? I have one quick global question. Did we craft this exclusively from dead scratch? Or did we, you mentioned other, some other communities. Did we steal all of this from another community?
I'd say bits and pieces. What's pretty, because we're thinking about parking maximums, we wouldn't have to do that. But if we do want to do a parking maximum, that is something that would be completely new, that we have not seen based on the building footprint.
Well, it sounds like something this commission would love to... That sounds like right up our alley. Bring some craft stuff from dead scratch. Okay, all right. Let's, any other global questions? Any other big macro view questions on this? Okay, all right. Let's jump into section one. Anybody have any thoughts on section one? All right, we're, look at this, we're going to be done in five minutes, or maybe not. All right, section two. Any question, any questions, comments in the section two area?
Like the concept.
I do too. I do too. I think we're on the right track here. Just out of curiosity, what is the ten percent deduct? What does that account for? Where it says you take all the floors combined together minus ten percent? This is in section F1. So if you, when you're calculating floor area, I'm just curious what the ten percent is. Is that the thickness of the walls? Is it hallways, bathrooms? I don't, I don't...
I'm curious why it's ten? Yeah, I'm not sure. Do we still have, floor area was important with the last one. I don't, does our table talk about floor area or anything?
I believe it does in some of the exceptions that we left in there for minimums.
Okay.
If you have a thirty-story building, that's a lot of mass.
Like restaurants, it still requires fifteen spaces for a thousand feet of gross floor area.
Other than that, I have no questions. We're on the right track.
An apartment building, no one lives in the hall.
Yeah, I get it. So ten percent is the common area deduct. I just was curious where that, what that came from. Okay. Stairwells, hallways, restrooms, I saw that, but, okay. Anything on section two, anyone? Oh, jeez, maybe we will be done in five minutes. I got this section, I got a feeling that section four is going to put us right over the handlebars. Section three, anyone?
Yeah, I've got a bunch of thoughts on three.
All right, let's do it.
Some notions there. I think we need to be a little more specific than say thirty percent of your back, or thirty feet into your backyard, you can just park thirty feet into your backyard. How do you get there? I mean, there are certainly instances in my neighborhood where people seem to just kind of go over the curb and just kind of park somewhere in the direction of their backyard. I'm, I question that.
So it'd be from thirty feet from the rear property line?
The rear property line? What if the rear property line, again, what's access? Are we talking alleys where it's just on the same plane? Are we talking...
We do have definitions for rear property line.
I want to finish. And so, I mean, are we talking, you can come in just like off your driveway, you can park off your driveway? It just needs to get tightened up.
Ah, I see what you're saying.
And because otherwise, I think it could be, well, I came in off my, entered on my driveway, then I just kind of drove over here by the corner by my neighbor's house, and I parked my car there. I once had a neighbor that did small engine repair at their house, and they had fourteen cars in their lot at one, and next to me at one point. And so I tend to be a little skeptical of this whole parking in the backyard, although it happens. And it's not the, it's not the end of the world, but I think we need to be sort of specific about it in what we're talking about and how to get to that point. So that's my main concerns there. I think we need to be a little more specific in how we do it. And also, it's probably covered in other parts of the code, but it wouldn't hurt to include how many cars you can put on your, on a lot. There is a maximum of how many cars, I presume? Or there is no maximum?
So yeah, so right now, you're allowed, if it's in your backyard, you're allowed to park however and wherever you want on an unimproved surface. So you can park, you could park twenty vehicles in your backyard on the grass as it currently stands, as long as they're licensed and operable. So there are a number of vehicles that, you know, the wheels are off, they're up on something, you know, so we send letters for those. If the tabs are out of date, we can send letters for those. But as long as they're all licensed and operable, you could have, if you could fit fifty cars back there on the grass, you'd be allowed to do it.
Yeah, I've got a few reservations about that.
And that's where our current code stands.
I think we've got to tighten something up there a little bit there. That's all I'm saying, is because the phenomenon I've seen in my neighborhood over the years is that everybody has more and more stuff. And there's just more and more stuff parked everywhere, where, I don't know, it's just, I think it's worth saying, you know, three cars, four cars, pick a number, right? Kevin, how many cars do you have parked in your yard?
I don't park any in my yard. I do not park any in my yard.
But you have a fine collection of cars.
I park on improved surfaces and keep them somewhere else, right? Yeah.
So I would like to see that get a little, the whole how many cars and where you can put them tightened up a little bit. That's my personal opinion.
All right, section, we're still in section three. Anyone else?
Well, just, just to build off of that, do we treat RVs and trailers differently in our ordinance? So a boat trailer, a boat on a trailer, an RV, they're just, so if the license tabs are current on a RV, I presume on a boat trailer or on a boat that's on a trailer, you're good to go?
They can be parked in the rear grass as well.
Yeah. Okay, so there's been some discussion about on-street parking of trailers and things to that effect here recently, but, okay. So that's the universe of stuff we're talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, I have similar thoughts, just a little bit on this. What ran through my mind is just because it's in the rear yard doesn't mean that it isn't directly facing somebody else's yard. So I, my mind was going towards screening here is where I was starting to get to. If you're still, you may be allowed to have a lot of cars, but if, I think I'm almost getting back to where, like, on where a commercial parking lot faces a residential, you have to screen it if it's more than so many spots or so many cars. So I'm not anywhere near saying I have the correct solution here, but I am in agreement with the rest of the group that I can see problems where, especially alleys, somebody has a really nice backyard, they don't want to put up a six-foot fence and block out the world, but they don't want to look at thirty cars. I don't know. So I don't have any great guidance. We're just basics, we're just kind of spitballing here, but I'm kind of on the same board of maybe, maybe tighten this up a little, something, a little something.
So there's two options to either, so we're looking at putting in our parking ordinance that would reduce it, I guess, with the amount that you can do. So you're not able to do it across your entire backyard, thirty feet from your rear property line. So that'd be one way to reduce your entire backyard from being parked on. The other part that could be, you know, instead put in there would be in our screening requirements. We have screening requirements for outdoor storage. That's other things like lawn mowers, stuff that either needs to be put in a shed or you need to screen it from the neighbor's yard. So, you know, that'd be a potential, that'd be a potential another option. But you do look at, you know, properties that have alleys, they're parking on unimproved surfaces, you know, there's, many people have class-five driveways. They're going to be parking, you know, within their, I guess, first thirty feet of that property for sure. But how far do we want to allow that? You know, I'm not sure if, I don't, I'm not sure if we'd be prudent to require screening to park on like a class-five driveway right next to the alley from your neighbor's place.
I agree with that, but I'm saying if they're five, if they're stacked five-deep, you get the first course, doesn't have to be screened.
Doesn't have to be screened by anything.
You start working into row three, four, and five, you know, that's what I was thinking about.
I like the approach of maybe working at it from the screening, parking screening criteria someplace else in the ordinance, as opposed to saying you only get so many. Because if you get only so many, you know where we're going on this, we're going to get a bunch of applications for storage garages. We're back to stuff that we've kind of tried to fend off, because that's not the character of Brainerd that we're trying to project on all of our entryways and stuff, is storage garages. So you gotta, you may, you may solve a backyard problem and turn it into now a feature problem for the city of Brainerd on every entryway. So if you could do it with screening, it seems like a way to not drive this and drive the problem into a different type of development than we'd really like.
Yeah, please, Don.
What if we counted cars as impervious surface?
There we go. I work, I've actually ran across that in some municipalities, yeah. Okay, well, I think we've given you a very clear guidance, James.
And our plan for this as staff is, once we get recommendations from the Planning Commission, so we could look into a screening option as well to present that to the Planning Commission, we would be looking after this, based on recommendations from the Planning Commission, to then have the Parking Commission review this as well. Look at recommendations from them, and then bring it back to Planning Commission for a kind of a final, a final draft. So I think we could look into it as staff for screening requirements as well and see what we can do with that.
It kind of seems like the right thing, yeah. I see some head nodding, so you don't need a motion, you need a motion on that one? Okay, very good. All right, here we are at the juggernaut, section four. Anybody, who wants to kick it off? Anybody? Maybe nobody has anything on section four. I don't know. Maybe, maybe it was section three that was... Any section four? Yeah, please, Tim.
Okay, so the way that I'm reading this bicycle parking space, so if we had somebody that dropped a five-hundred-unit apartment building in Brainerd, would they still be limited to just the one, like, spot that they could replace with, there's no, it doesn't scale up past that for anything bigger?
We didn't have it scaling up past there. We could look at that provision potentially, I guess, could be for every ten spaces, you can, you know, add another bicycle parking space. That could be a potential option. But for this one, we did just, you know, essentially just, you can do one.
And then, on the bicycle question, did we define bicycle parking? And what the dimensions are of that as compared?
We haven't, you know, I think that could be, you know, a good idea to do. I think that'd be a good thing to add to it.
Bicycle screening? No, I'm just kidding. How many bikes do you see in my bike?
I'd like to point out, that's what the City Hall is doing with the bicycle screening. If anybody's tried to ever park their bike, it's very well screened under a couple of apple trees.
Anybody else? Section four? Yes, please, Don.
I'd like to channel my inner Chuck Marone and say, why a hundred percent of the building size, the footprint? Why not seventy-five percent? That's one thought. Do other cities use a hundred percent? Where do we get the hundred percent from?
Just looking at, you know, specifically some of our sites, Ace, you know, Ace Hardware, some of those, it did seem appropriate to not restrict it too much, because this is something new. Other cities haven't, you know, gone down this before, so we can't get feedback from them. So if we restrict it to seventy-five, does that become too restrictive? You know, staff, by looking at a whole bunch of properties in the city, you know, thought a hundred percent would be a pretty appropriate number for all different types of uses.
We just picked it and said, this is a good starting point. I'm excited to do this, just to see what happens. I love these kinds of projects.
As staff, I do think a hundred percent is probably a little, maybe even more than necessary, but it's at least, I think, a good starting point.
But two, it's a maximum. And so, so a developer or a businessperson could decide, I don't need that much. I'm going to do seventy-five, I'm going to do fifty. But what we're saying is, you're going to have to talk to us if you want more than a hundred percent, right? Now we're kicking you over to conditional use.
Yep.
You're going to come over here and make the case that your business model requires two-hundred-and-fifty percent.
That'll be my next point when we get to it here, when we get to it. So, yes, I totally agree, though. Anything else? All right, you led me into it. So I always get really nervous anytime we start talking about putting something into a conditional use, because then I think you're basically saying that this is an allowed, this is an allowed use. All you have to do is come here and make a case for it, which I think, I can think of any number of ways, it's really easy to say you need a lot of parking. And we really have no way to say, no, we can only attach conditions, unless I'm understanding, and I've had this conversation with many, many different city employees, blah, 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 about conditional use means it is allowed. You cannot say blanket, no, you cannot do this. You can only say, you're allowed, as long as you make the case for it, which is very hard to say you're not making the case for it. That's my problem with this. We're only allowed to attach conditions. So I'm going to just use an example. I'm just saying, an entity comes to us that we think already has way too much parking. And they say, we need more parking because of X, Y, and Z. In my understanding, the conditional use is, we don't have a mechanism to say no. If they make enough of a convincing case, we can only say, you only, you have to add screening. We can't just say, no, you have enough.
Trees on the islands.
Correct. So that's my hesitancy with anything in a conditional use permit, but maybe you can tell me differently, and we can all just say, we don't care what your reasons are, no, you're not getting more parking.
One of the big things that you can use to, I guess, go against a conditional use permit would probably be things that aren't supported in the comprehensive plan for economic development, land use, that type of thing. So things that aren't in support of the comprehensive plan can, you can use that to essentially deny a conditional use permit. So there are potentials for it, you know, does it fit the neighborhood? If somebody's asking for something, say, in a TN2, to have something larger, and there just isn't a lot of large parking lots in the neighborhood, that's another reason that something could be voted down for a conditional use permit. You know, could it be a little tougher in like, in our general commercial district to maybe shoot down a conditional use permit? It probably would conform with the, you know, the zoning district. You know, could you, could you find a comprehensive plan to, I guess, deny it? I could see something maybe being a little bit more difficult for a general commercial zoning district compared to other ones. But then you go to the other side of things, if there is something that needs something larger, then you have to go on the variance route. And variances, you know, for parking lot expansion could also be extremely difficult to get. So, you know, is there a good mechanism? If something is needed, you know, it may be very tough.
Right. My preference is the variance route on this, because then we do possess blanket denial. And I was just going to say, you can look at examples within our own city in T and one in neighborhoods where there are enormous parking lots for a particular entity. I'm not naming any names, but we have those examples, right? So anybody else could come to us and say, hey, look, I'm in a T and one, but hey, they're in a T and one. And I think it would be very difficult for us, even with the comprehensive plan in our hand, which is a very malleable document, I think anyone would agree with that, to say, no, that, you know them, yes. So that's my hesitancy, and my leaning here is more towards the variance on this side, but that's my thought.
But then again, parking lots do not support infield development. So I'm sorry. No, I, yeah, I, I agree. I don't, you know, maybe you don't worry about how you advance that ball on the field. But I would agree that conditional use would not be, I mean, it does put the invitation out. But also, I think you're clearly conveying that it's a more difficult path, and if you don't want to be pestered by process and additional filing fees, a hundred percent...
Have potential to conditions.
Yeah, with conditions that might come in here. So it may be enough of a signal in your ordinance to drive the outcome you really want anyway. And for those folks that feel that's not good enough, and they come on in here, they may, they may be few, and they may have good cases, and you say, good enough. And I would have a hard time trying to think of a variance scenario where a parking lot would be allowed. What is the condition, what's the hardship?
Practical difficulty would be...
What is it? What is the practical difficulty? If the site slopes away, that... If, if the, if the site slopes away, that means you can't put as much and you'd have to fill it, that doesn't work, um, I don't know what it would be, I would, I would have a hard time finding myself supporting a variance for that.
Well, we have a, we have, uh, two-hundred employees and we have a hundred, a hundred spots, is that a practical difficulty, you know?
Commute with a friend?
Right.
Make friends at the office.
Or ride a bike.
So does, does there seem to be a general consensus that remove the conditional use? I don't know if we want to make a motion on that part.
I don't, I think, this is one of those, I think you just got to let it, put it out there and see what happens and adjust from there, but...
I think we, I think we need to talk about a little more.
I agree.
I'm not ready to make any call.
And the parking commission should weigh in on this, there actually is a parking commission that would probably love to talk about this.
So potentially, let's, let's maybe bring it to the parking commission, bring one more draft ordinance to the planning commission, and then we would look at doing a first, or doing the public hearing, I think that might be the best route to go.
Works for me. Head nods, anyone else? Any other thoughts? All right, very good.
The only other thought with that section, um, you did see that there were, were some exemptions to the calculations, um, any members of the planning commission see anything else that should be potentially exempted? Um, here we did say permitted outdoor sales areas, um, off-street loading areas, motor vehicle fueling spaces, and drive-through lanes.
If we miss something important, I bet you will hear it in a public hearing, you know, we'll, I mean, so it's a good question to ask now, but even if we're, if we think it's a good list, we'll probably hear some good ideas in a public hearing, go, oh, of course, head slappers then.
Yeah, you can't think of everything, you know, before, so, you try to just get close, yep.
Throw it out there for the public to kick it for you.
All right, yeah, please, Tim.
Are you including like all the, I can't quite tell, in the calculation, the, if we're putting berms in places and things?
So that would not be, if they did like a berm or a landscape island, that would not be counted towards it?
Okay.
Yep.
All right, very good. And with that, believe it or not, we are to the public forum, so I'm going to open up the public forum.
Actually, no, no public forum on this one.
Oh yeah, that's right, uh, well, no, eight, eight, I'm sorry, do, do we need a motion on, on the, on-street parking? Sorry.
Um, is there, so I guess the last part of it, um, to discuss would be the residential zoning districts.
Okay.
So we kind of went through kind of commercial and maximums, um, here you'll see for the, um, residential zoning district, that there still would be potential minimums, uh, requirements for some of those uses.
And those were different from the single-family or, or those that could be determined, is what I'm hearing, is that correct?
So, so this one, I'd say, we, we left what was in there from the previous tables for restaurants, nursing homes, that type of thing, um, but what changed up, uh, was the attached single-family dwellings where we had a tiered system in there, so that's kind of one of the big changes. Then we left other types of residential facilities where people live at, um, within minimum requirements, and then anything that didn't require conditional use, um, in a residential zoning district. So still setting, do we, you know, does, does planning commission want a minimum for restaurants in, say, a TN2 district?
Yeah, it just seems like we've transit, yeah, please, Don.
Um, I would say, yeah, going with your thought, I, I'm, I'm kind of torn with the whole idea of minimums, if you're a business person and you're going to open a business and you think you can get away with two parking spots, well, I guess, good luck with that and go for it. I, 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 I almost like this as guidance and say, here's what we suggest, here are norms, here are things that work in other communities or levels, as opposed to saying, you got to have eleven parking spots or something like this. So, that's, that's my thought. I'm, I'm wary of minimums.
Yeah, agreed. There's no handicapped ADA attachments to minimums, that type of thing, maybe there is.
There would still be as part of a building permit.
You still have to have those, right?
Yep, you still do have to have those.
But not on the residential side, right?
Not, probably residential, commercial properties would have, would have min- uh, minimum requirements for ADA, but we still do have that, uh, residential minimum requirements for, say, apartment buildings. But there's like, uh, for instance, commercial retail establishments again would be, uh, potentially just a permitted use in the TN2 district, should there be any minimum requirements for parking there? Um, because it'd be a permitted use, there'd be no, I guess, no public hearing for residents that live right next door to it to, to voice any concerns or add any conditions to, to that. So do we, you know, does planning commission want to see a minimum for something like that because it's just a, a permitted use, or, you know, do we eliminate, specifically the two big ones would probably be, um, restaurants and commercial retail establishments, does that just need to be eliminated, eliminated altogether?
Tempting. It is tempting.
Because it's so hard, like, if you have a restaurant, you have a small restaurant, you try to limit them, I mean, you get one person come in and then you get a family of four, but they have a vacancy available of three-hundred, and, um, pretty soon, you get a, a small parking lot full and you can't, uh, I mean, it could potentially hurt their businesses, is what I'm trying to say.
Uh, how about the minimums on the residential stuff? Anybody have any thoughts there? I, I wanted to weigh in on just one of the conversations that happened during the parking commission working on this, we, this got talked out, talked through quite a bit on the minimums for residential, specifically in the downtown, and the mindset where there was, you have a, a downtown environment that depends upon, uh, customers being able to come and go to storefronts with a high degree of rapidity, right? And, but then you have somebody who converts a building into twenty-five units, makes no provisions whatsoever for parking, next thing you know, all of their residents are sneaking in, unless it's very well maintained, basically clogging up or taking all of those spaces, those high spaces. When we held our open, our public forum specific to this, we had four or five people specific from the downtown, and that was their complaint, was that the residential units, there was no provisions made for parking for them, and they were just taking up all the commercial spots. You, you have a place down there, you can probably speak to this better than any of us, but I will say, that was a big part of the conversation as the plan, as the parking commission worked through the minimums for, uh, parking in residential, in downtown districts. Mr. Kramvik.
So with this provision, there would be no minimum requirement even for the downtown districts, because that's technically not a residential zoning district.
Right.
Um, something could be added to it, I know what we discussed originally, are they required to maybe have half the number of parking spaces, um, that, say, like an apartment building in a CN2 district would be required to have? Um, so we could potentially add that as a provision, if we do want to see a parking, um, minimum for our downtown residential, um, housing. Could be potentially half the requirement of what they'd be allowed in other zones.
It was, it was definitely a snag, because, uh, you've got a building that converted into twelve apartments, and the homeowner, and the landowner literally tells them, well, you park wherever you can find a space.
And, and the, the residents become these kind of like midnight dwellers sneaking around, looking for places to park, I, I feel for them, you know, they're like, can I park here? No, is it safe there?
Or they move over here, because, yeah.
And then the downtown dynamics with parking changes, anytime a good restaurant opens up, the parking disappears, just like that. And that's another phenomenon, too, is that you can't say, well, oh, we've done all these surveys, all it takes is one hot restaurant and your parking has gone downtown, it just is, so it's interesting.
Yes, please.
City of Brainerd is not alone in that battle, uh, just about every single large municipality that has over a hundred years with a, a historic downtown faces that exact same battle. And so, what do they do? Uh, I guess that's the question for staff, as far as, have they changed out how they zone and what they permit for parking in those historic areas?
From our research, um, a lot of cities were just getting rid of parking minimums altogether, um, and it was essentially for them to figure out with the, with the developer. Now, it's part of a conditional use, you know, multi-family, um, downtown is part of conditional use, so parking spaces could be conditioned into something like that if planning commission, you know, saw that as a potential addition needed. Um, but for the actual parking ordinances, a lot of cities are moving to simplify things and just keep it eliminated to have a, a minimum even.
The critical part to this, in my opinion, is enforcement. If you have maximum parking in a downtown area and you do not enforcement, that's when all, or you do not enforce it, that's when all of these problems tend to crop up, in my opinion. If you have the two hours or whatever it is and it's strictly enforced, I think you have much less likelihood of, go ahead, Mr.
And it affects the culture, because as soon as, as enforcement is happening, word spreads, business to business, people knocking, you're going, hey, they're marking tires, by the way, I wish they still marked tires, because then people physically knew they were in trouble, they were in peril. And it sent a message to us, oh crap, I got to move my car, and so, yeah.
Yeah, please.
To continue getting Gord on the horns of the dilemma here, um, we, you know, Representative Staub is going to get a mailbox full of letters from North Brainerd about the mailboxes, now mail delivery service being brought to residential streets, right? I mean, I had to deal with that in northeast when I, um, developed, uh, redeveloped some properties there, and, and, and so if we're not allowing or creating some minimums for residences, the on-street parking is then going to create the conflicts around mail service delivery on a lot of parts of the, the city, so how do you do that? I mean, it, it's the same in my neighborhood, it's the same in northeast and, you know, everywhere else, so, so, you know, it, it almost says that, you know, to reduce the conflicts, there must be some number that's going to work. It's, you know, you don't have to worry about the guy in the, in the, in the utility truck pulling up in front of your mailbox to work on your neighbor's house, I mean, that's, that's a one-on, right? But daily, parking, parking, parking on the streets, that's, that's it, James, have you got a thought?
Yeah, and, and staff definitely recommends, say, for like the TN1 district, definitely should be a, a parking minimum requirement, um, and that's kind of how we built our form-based code, to make sure you're not overbuilding the site, is you have the appropriate number of off-street parking spots, so, you know, certainly not suggesting we should get rid of what we've presented, you know, for like the TN1, CN1 zoning districts, uh, but do we want to do something different for the town center, Main Street District? Um, do we want to keep that exempted from parking minimums is kind of, I think, kind of the big question for, for units.
I don't have a comment, other than to say, I love the idea of toying around with minimums, uh, but I, I think that it leads potentially to some issues if it's not enforced, and I'd love to hear what the parking commission has to say about it, too. Let's kick it over to them, let those guys. Anything else, James? Anybody else have anything? I don't think we're, uh, going to solve all these problems today here, I don't think, but, uh, we got a plan to at least run this through some other people.
That sounds good.
Sounds good, okay, anybody else? All right, so, uh, we do have a public forum, correct, nine?
Oh, yes, we do.
Okay, there we go, we're going to move on to the public forum, I'm going to open it at eight oh two, do we have anyone online? Very good, I'm going to close the public forum at eight oh two, and, uh, we're going to go on to, uh, staff reports, uh, who'd like to start?
I guess I can, I can start with that, um, I, I'll just be updating, uh, from the community development side of things, um, we certainly are seeing an uptick now, um, for single-family homes again, um, some of our local developers, um, are looking to, to start building single-family homes, so that seems, I think we just got five today, um, so that seems like a, a kind of a push in the right direction, we haven't seen many of those, um, since about mid, I guess, midsummer of last year, uh, we did see some of the two-plexes, four-plexes going, so, um, hopefully that's kind of a push in the right direction to get some of our, our developments finished out and, and some more single-family homes, um, for the city of Brainerd. Um, I guess the other, the other thing, uh, we'll be having next week, Wednesday, a EDA workshop, uh, a couple of things that we'll be discussing at the EDA workshop, uh, will be, um, BRE interviews, so, um, Bladec did go out into the community, uh, and interviewed a number of businesses, seeing kind of what the city of Brainerd needs, what do those businesses need, and then, um, from there, uh, the EDA is going to be looking at kind of potential next steps, we have the River to Rails district, which is an incentive program to redevelop a portion of downtown, um, but hearing from other businesses outside of the River to Rails and, and, uh, you know, what other potential incentive programs can the city or the EDA, um, do to help spur development in other areas? So that'll be one topic of item, um, and then the other topic that, uh, the EDA will be discussing would be the Westwood Mobile Home Park, and just kind of get an understanding of, you know, kind of the future of that area, kind of a high-level, um, look at that, so that'll be in workshop format, um, I, I think that is everything that I have from the community development department.
Thank you, James. Mr. Edwards?
Um, I don't think we have anything, most of what I've been working on has been related to our parking, so...
Very good, Mr. Ballmer, anything? All right, uh, then I'm going to bring this, uh, back to our commission reports, please.
Question for, for staff, um, James, can you provide an update on legalized marijuana and how that would affect, uh, or what opportunities or, or boundaries there are on the local control of that?
So, yeah, um, it, it's a, a large, uh, I guess a large bill that was passed with that, I think it was over three-hundred pages, uh, we're still kind of waiting for some guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities with that. I do believe that there's going to be some local control with that, uh, for sure, um, limiting the, you can't outlaw it, uh, within the city, um, but, so there's a, I believe it's twelve thousand five, for every twelve thousand five hundred residents, um, one of them shall be allowed, so there's potential to limit the number based on the population. Uh, it sounds like there may be some other, um, local zoning control, uh, I'm not sure exactly what's, that, that's going to look like at this point, uh, there were some other provisions in there, I think we talked about last time on how close it could be, potentially to a school or, or other certain things, um, that's written into the alcohol ordinance for state statute as well, so it's probably going to be similar to what, what's allowed for that. Um, but, uh, still, stay tuned on it, uh, did, at our department head meeting, uh, did make, uh, all the department heads aware, as well as the city administrator, that the planning commission, uh, would like to review it, uh, and that, that, that recommendation would be made to city council, city council would kind of take a look at things first, so...
Thanks, if we could maybe just have periodic updates on that as, as you're learning more or, or more information comes out, and, and your updates, that'd be great.
That sounds good.
Yeah, commission reports, uh, any, uh, anyone else? Don?
I, I have one, I just want to say, my favorite, uh, part that we struck from the parking minimums, number fifteen, golf courses, uh, require four spaces per hole, plus fifty percent of the requirements for any other associated uses, they're assuming the entire course will be filled from eight o'clock first tee time all the way, I love their optimism, and I love their sense that we need three-hundred parking spots and there never's been a golf course in Brainerd, but...
Very good, anything? All right, I have nothing either, other than just say thank you for staff on the work on both of these applications, because, uh, that was a lot of work, uh, that went into all of this, so, thank you guys for everything that you do. Yeah, anyone else? Nothing? Nothing, very good, uh, we're off to, uh, number twelve, anyone want to take a run at it? That's a, a adjournment.